States of America, two republics which stands on nation and on our heart. In the middle of the day and justice for all.
Hallowed Father, which art in heaven. Dear Lord God, we thank you for all your many blessings you've bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continue to bless our leader, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, all the department heads of the city, as we are gathered here on tonight to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And we pray that everything that we do will carefully give your name glory, honor, and praise within the Jesus name we pray. Amen.
I know Pete said he's got to drive back to the fire station, but the windows won't go down, so he's going to take the panels off the truck. See what's going on. I have a motion to adjourn.
Make motion.
All in favor?
I oppose.
But those approve the minutes from the November 9 regular scheduled meeting.
Make motion.
All in favor?
I oppose.
First of all, I want to thank Connie Manning, Mr. Councilman Manning, for, I thought I was going to be late tonight for my kids' basketball game, but I decided to skip it and be here. She was going to step in for me, and I appreciate it. I know she would handle it well or better. Just a few things. Veterans Day, I'll start by that. We had it back on November 11. Dillon always does a damn up job on Veterans Day. I had another big wrap, probably biggest we ever had. Had a little veterans square right in front of the city county complex. I want to thank you for all of your veterans and what y'all do every day, not just Veterans Day, but every day. Just a great, great program. The speaker, I think is assumed to be Colonel, came out from Blackwood. So, just a good, good, all around, good program, every day. Crime issue. We've had some issues everywhere in the city, I know that. I know the police department's doing a good job with it. I think most of what we're seeing around downtown is more juvenile crime, wouldn't you say?
That's right.
I know they've broken in a few stores downtown, two or three times consecutive nights.
They've made arrests in those cases.
They've made arrests.
But for you, there's a couple of hot spots.
We've got some leads on some in the neighborhood and stuff. It's like you said, just keep your doors locked, get your car doors locked. They're, you know, they're just stupid. I mean, I think they were carrying a ladder down Main Street. One of them was, you know, trying to get up near the second store window, carrying a ladder. They staked it out and called. But it's, it's going to continue. So, you just be vigilant in what you do and around your neighborhood. Before I forget, I do want to thank the police and fire departments on their Christmas party last week. Always well attended. They did a good job. Thank all of our here fire department members and police department. Goes without saying, right now, we've got one of the best staff police departments that I've seen since I've been here. So, I enjoy the time spent with them. Half of our budgeted revenue for the two cent hospitality revenues are already in this year.
Budgeted amount.
The budgeted amount. So, I think it's seven months to go, and we've already met half of the targeted revenues on that. So, that tells you what's going on out there in the restaurants, especially on the Radford Boulevard corridor. You know, there's been a push by us about a hotel. For those of you that don't know, and I got confused, what's the difference in a motel and a hotel? I think I even spoke with somebody the other day, and I got it backwards again. A hotel, your door is open from the interior, not the exterior, like we have here in Dillon. I think there's a need for a hotel here. We call, we let, started the contacts with our legislative delegation, Commerce Department, they are coming to Dillon, the Commerce Department, the Tourism Department, along with some other departments in early January to open the doors on what we can do to tie or recruit a hotel. So, the contacts and this calling, expressing an interest has paid off. So, they're going to be coming in at the end of this month or first of January about that. So, we'll, you know, this time next month when we have our council meeting, we'll see where that leads. Also talked with Rodney Berry, Congressman Ryse's office, sent him a copy of that through his email. So, we'll see where that goes. Glenn, I think, sent y'all the minutes on the pre-treatment permit with Purdue. It sounded almost to me a little bit, Glenn, that they were resisting on the ammonia issue. I know you're going to get into it, and I'm not going to ask you to right now, but that's the way I took it. Some, you know, Jeff, I think Jeff Smith is his name, with Purdue. He stated removing the ammonia through the treatment is not feasible. And, well, I'd like you to tell us what is feasible, or what could be, if they aren't going to do that, you know, where we're going with that in your comments. Y'all saw the notes, and they're getting back together here shortly, I think, next month also on that.
I didn't kill it, did I?
Not that I just sent that to you.
You sent that to me, okay.
That was just sent to me. Since you'd asked me that.
That's on the loan and all the SRF stuff.
Well, this was, we had a meeting with, we being me, myself, me, Hardy Jackson, Tammy Jackson, our lab director, and Mike Hannah, engineer, had a meeting with Purdue. I guess, what, two weeks ago? And we have a pre-treatment ordinance that is drawn up by DHEC that they have been looking at for, they being Purdue for several weeks and months now, that we need to hear to. So, it was one of those, we're going to sit down, get any questions, see what we can work out. And they brought in their lab director for total Purdue for environmental, and he had some questions. And Mike Hannah's getting back with answers for him. And then we're going to meet in January to dot the i's and cross the t's per se. Ammonia was a discussion. They don't know if they actually giving us what they, what we say they're giving us, and if they can bring it down to the level we're requiring.
Yes, so the last month's DMR, they sent us about seventeen, and we're only asking for a twenty.
So, we think they can meet the requirements we're asking. And I can't get into-
Concentration of ammonia was seventeen. How much did cost the extras of treating?
So, we just, you know, and that helps with the smell also. But it also helps on our end. We do our test, and we have to turn it into DHEC. If we're out of compliance on ammonia levels, we get a consent order. What we're trying to do with Purdue being that they are the only facility under our pre-treatment ordinance is kind of treat them as DHEC treats us. You know, here's the letter of the law, we'll work with you as much as possible. If you make us out of compliance, if DHEC comes to us, they don't go to you. So, we're trying to, you know, bring them in online. We went back, Tammy Jackson went back, probably fifteen years, Hardy, and up until five years ago, they gave us good warn on a consistent basis.
You tell you what, they used to run nine gallons of chicken, and now they're down to about five and a half gallons of chicken.
And that had a lot.
You've got to have concentration problems, and that's, you know, that was, I mean, honestly, I think that was my fault, but I didn't pick up on that, because y'all don't know how they killed the chickens. I know how they killed the chickens, and I know what they're sending us. I knew that sludge was going up, but I didn't realize our volumes had dropped so. So, the concentration had to be high.
It had to.
And then ammonia is just, is just another manifestation. Our sludge bills didn't go down, but our volumes went down, and that's what really led to, truth be known, that's what led to the sinkhole. Volumes drops, and loud that gas on top didn't-
And then another, another issue, I guess, in the last five or six years, Hardy, correct me if I'm wrong in how I state this, they used to feed their system with chlorine.
They would use chlorine at the end of the process, burn the ammonia.
Which, which would help us, because once they quit doing that, that has been a deterrent on our end. So, they're going to look at what that cost is going to be to maybe include chlorine back into their process.
Mike ever look at running that thing down in the swamp? Jack, that's expensive. I mean, we haven't got that deep down, but that would be an expensive endeavor. Well, I mean, pre-treating it at ten thousand dollars a month, that doesn't take long to pay for an expensive move.
But that's, that's where we are on that. And also in our discussions is Randy Brown, who is the plant manager, I guess is his title at Purdue, he is still interested in that we continue to do some kind of depreciation thing. And we just haven't come to those numbers yet.
Was Mike giving us any idea about what, what kind of money needs to be in that?
We're going to try to have something there next time we meet in January to throw to them, so they'll have, you know, some understanding. We haven't worked out all the details, how is it going to be, are we going to keep the same percentage of who's paying what now, or are we going to change that to another percentage? None of that's been discussed. Right now, we're just trying to, when I say percentage, right now, Purdue puts in a larger percentage.
Fifty-six percent.
They put in a larger percentage in that account than we do.
Well, I mean, I mean, we could share that equally, but their cost is going to be based on operation maintenance and-
Yeah, none of that will change.
All that will remain the same. We could fund the depreciation part of it equally. I think that's reasonable, because ultimately, when we use those funds, I mean, you don't want them to double pay for it, but you want to be fair, but at the same time, we don't need to be caught, you know, with a million dollars in a fund, and then we've got a two million dollar project that needs to be done yesterday.
And they don't want us either, because if we're down-
They're down, yes.
And, you know, so, that's, that is a good sign that they're interested and continuing to do that.
They're good corporate people.
And overall, with the meeting itself, you know, it was a positive meeting. Their lab folks are going back. In fact, I think the men's can visit our facility just to see how our facility works, so they can go back and see what they can do to help us. And then we'll come back together, I think it's the second week in January that we meet to discuss this rule. Just one other item, and all the, I don't know what account, 120, Department 31 revenues, it's all it is, it's miscellaneous and return of check fees. How is that so, how much, why are we getting so much back on that? Are we pursuing it?
That's reimbursement on lightning damage from our insurance company.
You had to do something like that.
There's not all return check fees.
All right, well, I didn't know, that's the way it's stated on there.
Listen, it says what, miscellaneous?
It does. Miscellaneous and returning check fees.
And the last, I missed a comment on this, it got me to me the other night after the police, I went to a Christian school, basketball game, kind of a thought, going down Radford, back home, stoplight at 3:01 at CVS, just turned green. I emailed Quinn after I got home, and I said, I know it hit us, and it worked. Five patrol cars, but I know they were hitting ninety, Jack, ninety miles an hour, right through the red light, wham, didn't look, even the ambulance will slow down and honk and all that stuff. Well, I had to hit brake pretty hard, they were there that fast on me. The car behind me slid into the median to keep rear, from rear end to me, but I hope we don't have our apartments flying through the city limits at ninety plus miles an hour through a red light.
Hope not.
I hope not. And that was almost a disaster. And I don't get it, was it the Sheriff's Department, or the boat, or the Highway Patrol, but good lord, that was just unbelievable when I saw it. And I know you've got a lot on the dock, I want to hurry up and get to-
Not really.
-the court, court systems and the executive session. Then I read that, in case I do miss it, I'm wrong in this, I want to congratulate Daughtry Carter on his retirement coming, how many years he's been in our city?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, September of nineteen ninety-four.
I believe twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years. So, we're going to miss him and all the service he's done for the city. We wish him well, his future endeavors, and I think we're going to have a little recognition of him tomorrow night. Thank you for all those, Doug, through the years. That's all.
I was going to talk a little bit about the Purdue meeting, which you brought it up, and we've already gone over it. Audit report will be presented in our next meeting in January. All that has been completed. The only other item I really have, and I think Betsy will have it in the newspaper, hadn't already been, is the Christmas schedule for the city during closing days of Christmas and New Year's. All offices will be closed on December 24th, 25th, December 28th, and January 1st. Residential garbage pickup, that's where we come to your house and pick up recyclers and your green roll carts. Those days that you normally get your trash picked up, Monday through Thursday, none of that will be affected. You'll still get that picked up. The only thing that will be affected during those four days will be limbs and lead pickup. We don't pick up limbs and leads the day the offices are closed. But your residential garbage and recyclers will be picked up on a normal day, it won't be double days where we pick up two routes in one day. So, this was a simple one there. That's all I have at this point, Mayor.
Yes, sir. With that, we'll go straight into the citizens' report, anything, anybody out there want to bring to our attention, this is the time. You do?
Yes.
Okay, you stand up, give us your name.
My name is Andrea Morrison for, I recently created a new organization called Bicycle is Building Bridges. We were approved in February of this year by the state senate, and I just wanted to make the city aware about what we do. What we do is we take children to visit their incarcerated parents at no cost to them or their caregiver, because when children, parents are sentenced, no one looks back to see what's going on with them. So, they'll be given counseling, so that they can understand what, what's going on, and to help them, because statistics show that most children of incarcerated parents end up incarcerated themselves. So, we want to try to intervene before that process happens. And also, parents return back to their children strangers, and we want to make sure that these kids can stay in contact with their parents.
Appreciate you, what you do. I know our church has a angel tree. I was at their Saturday with one, giving the presents to the children of prisons. So, thank, you're on camera with both media sources here, so you'll be running for the next month, so you're going to get a lot of feedback on that. So, if you want to give your name and contact-
Okay. You can contact me at Andrea187879@gmail.com, or on my phone, 843-506-2182, and on Facebook at Bicycle is Building Bridges. Thank you, we appreciate any help that we can get. It's a new organization, and we're growing, but we're also eager for members. Thank you very much.
People come, you get a lot by coming tonight. Keep it on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Unfinished business ordinance, 1510 and amended or stated, master bond ordinance for the Highway 301 Sewer Relocation Project.
You think do you want?
No, sir. Also, ordinance 1511 and SRF series ordinance for Highway 301 Sewer Relocation Project.
I make a motion.
Have a second for that.
I have a second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
No due business on the dock at tonight. Council member report, Mr. Eller, anything you can bring?
Just one thing, Barry, you spoke about trying to do some upgrade things at the ball field. I only have a quick question, are, we refinanced the bond for the Wellness Center, and that's coming out in February. The first of February, is it the latter part of February?
I don't remember the date, sometime February.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Okay, I lost it, twenty-first. Also, the hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, Ms. Chan, when are you planning on taking that out of hospitality fund?
The hundred and ninety?
Yes, ma'am, the excess fund supplies?
Oh, whenever, I think you should all of them, I'll take it out.
So, that's March, February, March also?
I'll take it out more than likely in February, when audit comes to council.
How much, how much you think we're looking into trying to upgrade money-wise, as far as, have we looked at a plan trying to-
No, not yet, no.
Because that's really going to put the count a great number.
We haven't done that, we're just now getting down to what we need to do. In fact, I wrote a letter today to request some funding to do some things out there from outside sources, so that'll, that'll help. But soon we can come up with, with a plan, and hopefully, next meeting in January, have something down, and see what we need to do or like to do.
That's all I got.
Man, are we going to be able to do anything important for Christmas weekend?
I was going to discuss that with you in executive session.
But, oh, no, about Deadwood, are you going to look into Deadwood? About getting fit on Deadwood?
Directly positive, yeah, we're looking into that.
That's all I got.
I was, I was out at the Fitness Center, Saturday afternoon at four o'clock, with three kids, and that's a gorgeous day, with three kids out there, just, that thing is nice. But I was out there at the, you know, little park out there, and the, you know, that little, that surface is just amazing.
That's the first time you've been on it?
Yeah, yeah. And evidently, my crowd goes out there all the time. They, a couple of things they would like, you know, or just to think about, is picnic table, you know, I told them, you know, they're talking about some of the artistic shading, artistic meaning that, you know, you send them that, there's an airport that has that, it almost looks like a tent. My comment to them was, we don't want to hide the building, because it's such an attractive building, but, you know, maybe we do think about putting some treatment pads or something on that.
Well, as far as inside the fence here, there's really no place to put it.
Right.
We asked, I asked about that when we were putting it out.
Putting it out there.
And I know inside the fence there's space, we have to go outside.
And you still can do that.
Yeah.
You still can do that. And we were talking about, one time, having some exercise stuff there for adults, I mean, which also could be outside, you know.
Well, and we have some places also along the track area, we built a track to, to do things like that also.
But it was-
It's used-
It was sort of nice, and of course, it was a gorgeous day, you know, just-
Well, you bring that up, and I meant to bring up my report, we had our annual breakfast with Santa Saturday at the Wellness Center with the Dillon Quarters Club, we've done for years, and they came in and played with the bounce house, ate pancakes, talked with Santa, and when they left, a lot of them went to the playground.
Yeah. The, you know, we, we live in a, you know, in a tough area, I mean, you know, there's not a lot of wealth in Dillon County, but, you know, you step out there, and you're in Columbia, or Charlotte, or Charleston, it's just, it's really refreshing, but the city's done a great job out there, and something that all of us should be proud of, not council members, all of Dillon's should be proud of, and I think, I think they all, I'd really like to see those ball fields look the same. That's me.
I'd like to touch on the, with our power issue the other Saturday, when we had a helicopter that tore down the transmitter line and all that, and does, do they, who, does Duke Energy contact anyone with the city to help get the message out, or is it just based on, as far as emergency personnel?
Not to my knowledge. I called our, our contact with Duke Energy to find out, you know, why didn't we have electricity? She had no idea, she said, I'll call you back in under than five minutes, she called me back, told me why.
Well, you know, with them being our provider, and, you know, partially because why Duke Energy is in Dillon is because we have kind of took them as a provider, correct? The city has.
No, we don't, we don't have a choice in that.
Okay, but is there any protocol where if they know we're going to be without power for that long a time, can they contact people, can we get emergency? Because I know of at least two red lights in Dillon that it, they never got manned, and, you know, at least it's a dangerous situation, especially when you're dealing with roads that have chores coming through, or, you know, our local people kind of know where the red lights are at and automatically slow down, but you get someone coming, you know, down number nine, that's not familiar with the area, or Mobley's Highway, and before you know it, you know, they went through a red light or whatever. So, I just, you know, I'd like to see maybe there's some kind of way we make sure that they're all manned in that type of situation.
Well, and mainly the stoplights, you know, on that particular day, we got, I don't know how many we got, five, six, seven stoplights, maybe eight. We had four people working.
Right.
We brought in who we could get to come in.
Oh, I know.
And then the highway department came out and put out temporary stop signs at some of those that wasn't running.
I was just wondering, especially when it's going to be, you know, lots of times we're without power, thirty minutes, fifteen minutes, they fix the line, or, you know, cars ran into a tree, or, I mean, to a fire pole, but with that situation, it just looks like if they ever would be without five or six hours.
They didn't know how long we were going to ride. And what their protocol is, I don't know.
Right.
Like I said, I called because come to find out, it was out everywhere, basically inside the city.
But usually you'll call, they'll tell you.
Yeah. Well, in fact, my neighbor called and said it was going to be forty-five minutes. Well, you know, that was right, it went off.
Right.
Because they didn't have any idea at that time either, but I was surprised it was back home, back home to my house in two hours' time. I'm very surprised.
Usually when they crack that thing back up, it'll blow a few seconds.
Yeah. That's all I've got.
Where, or, knife and cat home, that little hotspot, I notice it's cooled down, and there's that street sign just still that had that.
I've talked with the highway department, and the highway department will not replace it, because it's not defaced on the front of the sign, and there's no bad language on back of the sign.
We don't know what that is, I don't know if that's invitations, or-
I've talked to them, but they will not.
Then look, if we paint every sign in town like that, it just wouldn't make the city look good.
I did do follow-up with them again, and that's what he had told me.
Okay. And then we did, I know that seems and alley work being done, is that the alley work that's supposed to be done before we could do, missing the clothes?
Yeah, they haven't come to pave yet.
Okay, but that was the alley work?
Yes, ma'am. Hopefully, January, we gave it to the PO last week, so hopefully between now and first of the year, depending weather.
I spoke to you, I guess, that there's a little, little short street there, I think it's called Jerry Court, do you remember? Yeah, I saw it, and it looks really bad when it's wet, and I think that's something that shouldn't have been done, I think it's supposed to have been done, when By Street, which is the next street up, was done, and that's been, I guess, ten years now, I think. And I was wondering, is, when that stuff get done, is there any-
Reservicing?
Yeah.
That's led to the C funds, I mean, I can, I think I turned that one in, if I'm not mistaken, but that's where one house is at the beer union.
Right, right, but that, that, I think she's very, I see some lot of mud puddles all the way back in there, and I think she really would-
I'll follow up with the county C fund committee and make sure that, that it's on the list. Doesn't mean that it's going to be paved, but all it can do is request it.
I think all they do is push it, just make it worse, so, she really would appreciate it. That's all I got.
All right. Johnny, then we'll have to do it. Sorry, I'm going to go. Before I close on, I think Todd Hayes and David Strickland for stepping in on the downhill Dillon, they highlighted playground area, the fact he did the show right there on it, and David was at the golf course, I was too busy to do that show the last couple of months. Guess I have to start it again first of the year. But I want to thank them. Lot of stuff going on in Dillon, coming up next year, especially out there at Radford, and I think out there, the other episode.
I think out there at the other, it's just a lot of things happening.
And the Christmas tree was a success. I've been enjoying it.
It always is. Like, we had more people this year than we ever had.
A lot of people attended.
Maxie Brown.
Yeah.
Most I ever seen.
And congratulations to the Dylan Wildcats.
Yeah, that's right.
Four through the road, six out of eight.
See, I hit that parade, the marching band is 50 yards ahead of Max. On this everybody, Merry Christmas. If there's anything to do, council, I would motion to adjourn, go into executive session.
I'll make that, bud.
Back in the morning.
All in favor?
I oppose.